Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting of the North Andover School Committee to order for April 9th, 2020. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you're at home, please rise and I'll do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in them as well, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry about that. The feedback caught me off guard, that's why I apologize. Okay, as a preliminary matter, again, this is David Turisi, Chairman of the North Andover School Committee. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Andrew McDevitt.
Yes.
Helen Picard.
Yes.
Amy Mably.
Yes.
Holly Witzke.
Yes.
Okay, staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Dr. Greg Gilligan.
Yes.
Lorraine Marks.
Yes.
Marcy Bucuzzi.
Yes.
And Town Council, Suzanne Egan.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We don't anticipate any other speakers on the agenda, so, okay, so again, good evening, everyone. This is the open meeting of the North Andover School Committee and is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment, public comment that I have received prior to today. For this meeting, the North Andover School Committee is convening by video conference and is posted to the town's website. Okay, meeting materials. Okay, meeting business ground rules. We'll now turn to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line to the members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold your name, please hold until your name is called. Please remember to mute your phone when you are not speaking, and please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. Okay, I think, finally, each vote we take tonight will be taken, conducted by roll call vote. Thank you for your patience tonight. There's a lot to get through. The agenda's not full, but the public comment is full. For continuity purposes, I just want to take consent agenda approval of minutes out of order. The minutes in the packet, could I have a minute, a motion to approve the minutes as presented in the packet?
So moved.
Second by Ms. McDevitt.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Witzke, seconded by Mr. McDevitt. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Mr. McDevitt, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Witzke, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Mably, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Picard, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Chair Turisi votes yes as well. That's a 5-0 vote. Okay, I've talked to Superintendent Gilligan already, there's no superintendent's report and there's no chair's report. There was no old business, there was only new business. So in order to tee this up, just for continuity purposes alone, I'm going to have Dr. Gilligan summarize or read Commissioner Jeff Riley's memo from last Friday, April 3rd, regarding this issue. Dr. Gilligan?
Thank you, Chair Turisi. How is the volume, okay?
I can hear you fine.
Okay. Last week, there were several questions about April vacation, and the state said they were going to provide some guidance or weigh in at the end of last week, which they did late on April 3rd in the afternoon, and this was the message sent to school districts from Commissioner Jeff Riley. Dear superintendents, charter school leaders, and assistant superintendents, we have received questions about whether school districts should keep their planned April school vacation week this year, the week of Patriots' Day, April 20th, or use that week to continue the remote learning plan they have put in place. This is a local decision. Each committee or public school board of trustees establishes the school year calendar, excuse me, establishes the school year schedule to schools consistent with state standards outlined in the student learning and time regulations. Within those standards, the school committee or board may adjust the school calendar to meet the needs of its community, subject to collective bargaining as applicable. For school districts that are considering using part or all of April vacation to provide continuity of learning for students, please note that Patriots' Day is a statewide legal holiday. In the "on the desktop" message from Commissioner O'Reilly, they have an update on the 180-day requirement and more dated March 10th. The commission has stated that the longest any school district would be required to go in the current school year is its scheduled 185th day, although a district could decide to go longer. If a school district continues providing its remote learning program for students from April 21st to the 24th, the district is not required to go beyond its previously scheduled 181st day. Districts that maintain the vacation week as school vacation will be expected to resume their remote learning program on April 27th and conclude the school year no earlier than the previously scheduled 185th day. Whichever way you decide to use this week of April 20th for your school community, we appreciate all the thoughtful work the district and educators are doing to maintain strong connections with students and promote their well-being and continued learning during this challenging time. Sincerely, Jeffrey C. Riley, Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Gilligan. At this point, I'm going to go to public comment, and I want, I would love some patience here because there were a lot of comments that were submitted. This is not easy, it's not going to flow perfectly, but I want to thank the people who decided to weigh in and send comments. I think to be respectful to their efforts, I need to read them verbatim as much as I can. Most of the comments, I think I can read under three minutes each, which is our normal guideline anyways, as far as public comment goes. So this is not the best way to do public comment, but under these circumstances, I think we have to do it this way. So, please be patient, sit back, and put your phones on mute. Actually, before I say that, I want to say thank you to Brian from CAM for getting this all set up. I know this isn't easy to have everybody doing this, so I appreciate you doing this tonight. I also know that you get the Board of Health meeting tonight as well, so thank you, Brian. Okay, first email is from Kim Hurst, 60 Sherwood Drive. Dear School Committee, I hope on one of hundreds of public comments given kudos to Dr. Gilligan and his entire public school for the calm, rational, well-thought-out resumption of structured learning. No stone was left unturned during the rollout. Each and every member of the North Andover Public School System makes me proud to call this town home. Sincerely, I'm going to, this little thing, but thank you, Kim, for that comment. I am reading these just in the order I received them, and they started coming Tuesday night, so I'm going to go down the line. The next comment comes from the North Andover Teachers Association. We are writing as North Andover Teacher Association's co-presidents to voice our frustration that the school committee is considering changing the dates of April vacation without negotiating the change in working conditions with the association. To be clear, we do not have a stance about when these four days in the school calendar would be most beneficial, and we have not polled our members to see what their preference would be. Our frustration stems from the fact that we are finding out now that this has become an issue a week before the originally scheduled vacation is expected to begin. This is a time of uncertainty and anxiety in our community and world unlike any in our lifetime. We are unclear why the school committee would add more uncertainty into an already stressful situation. And in a advisory to school committees from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees dated April 1st, it says the following. This is the time to lead in unity and to avoid confusion in the community. Stay in regular contact with your superintendent and call special meetings only when the meeting is necessary for the welfare of your district. We believe from our reading of this section that the intent is to keep things as predictable as possible and not make any unnecessary changes or create additional conflict. We are sure there are good reasons to keep the April vacation as it is and also good reasons to change it, but we believe that the uncertainty and anxiety it creates outweighs any positive effect of making the change. If you consider, if you choose to consider changing the vacation dates at this meeting, we as union leadership are forced to demand to bargain over the proposed change prior to any implementation of a change. If so, we have entered into negotiations about the matter of rescheduling, eliminating these April vacation dates. This is not a fight that we are interested in having at the moment because it could delay the decision on April vacation to an even later date and disrupt the collaborative and trustworthy approach we have fostered with administration and the school committee. This dilemma that is being created is something that we are looking to avoid in our educational community. Therefore, we hope that the association and the school committee can avoid entering into negotiations and that you choose to quickly and decisively determine to keep the calendar as it currently stands. As we have said above, any negotiations over this topic must come prior to a decision by the school committee. Thank you for your time, and we look forward to hearing your response. This is signed by Lisa Razzan and Ryan Landry, co-presidents of the North Andover Teachers Association. Okay, that's two down. Next message is from Regina Keen, 412 Massachusetts Avenue. Please consider this a public comment for your meeting on April 9th. I wanted to voice my support for canceling April break this year. My reasons are, one, we have finally established a routine around the remote learning, plus my husband and I are working from home, and I think having such a routine is very important for our kids to help them maintain a sense of normalcy during this difficult time. I would hate to disrupt it as soon as we get into a groove. Number two, our kids will have missed enough learning by the time this whole crisis is over, so it will be good use, it will be good to use this time to continue learning. Three, if I understand the directive from Commissioner Riley correctly, if we cancel April break, we could end school on the 181st day rather than the 185th. If this is the case, I would rather have kids get out of school earlier in June when they can hopefully go somewhere than be out in April when they are just stuck at home. Thank you for your consideration. Next public comment from Kim Alperto, 66 J Road. Good morning. I am reaching out to express my support for canceling the April school vacation week of 2020. I have a sophomore at North Andover High School. This is important for two reasons. First, the students just started back into the swing of schooling this current week after essentially having three weeks off. I think it would be harmful to the routine they have just started to build again, to pause again at this time, and frankly, completely unnecessary. Secondly, holding the vacation week will, in my opinion, encourage people to further break the state mandate to stay at home unless absolutely necessary, and further endanger the lives of members of our community and essential service professionals. I am actually shocked the idea of still having vacation is even open debate at this point. We need to lead by example to our children, and hunkering down and doing our respective jobs for the larger community should be of the utmost priority for all. From Melanie and Tim Seibert, 40 West Brad Street Road. For the record, my husband, Tim and I, dear Mr. Turisi, for the record, my husband, Tim and I are in favor of canceling April vacation and having an earlier end of school date in June. It seems a shame to get remote learning underway, get into a groove, and then halt for a week and then restart again. We are in favor of keeping the momentum of remote learning going. Thank you. Tim True, shortened to the point, it makes no sense to have April vacation. Tim and Jenny True. Didn't leave it at this. This is from Janice Phillips, 355 Osgood Street. Hi, David and the school committee members. Thank you for your efforts during these strange times, you are appreciated, and I am including public comment for the 4-9 School Committee. While this is an easy issue to see all sides, I am ready to express my support for canceling the scheduled April vacation to continue with remote learning. I have a sixth grader and a 10th grader, and the primary reason I think canceling the vacation is important is consistency. This is the first week of remote learning, and we would only have two weeks under our belts before breaking. This would be very disruptive to any routine we have finally established. Also at this time, even remote schooling is providing some normalcy to the students, and this is a helpful, and this is helpful in a time of such uncertainty. Based on the commissioner's letter, removing April break would allow us to end the school year four days early. If this is in fact accurate, and if social distancing is to end by then, or even if not, it would allow families to make the most out of those extra days. Thank you for your consideration. This is from Holly Guptill. Hello, I have two children in the North Andover School District. I have one child at the high school and another at Atkinson Elementary. I'm writing to voice my opinion regarding April vacation. I would like to see our town eliminate April vacation this year. Our kids are just returning to learning and getting used to their new normal. I do not see the need to disrupt this ongoing adjustment. They have, they had a few weeks of quote-unquote vacation while the remote learning details were being worked out. This has been a tough time mentally for these kids, and even though it's the first week of remote learning, I have seen a great improvement in the attitudes of my own kids. Just being able to get back to some sort of normalcy has been wonderful for them. I would hate to see that disrupted for nothing. Richard Balmas, 96 Riddle Path. Thought you might be interested in the approach that Winchester is taking to recognize, oh, I'm sorry, this, this is public comment. This is another one. I'm sorry, this is not related to that issue, but I'll get back to Mr. Balmas another time. I apologize, Richard. This message is from Alyssa Goldberg, 41 Hawthorne Place. Hello, David, hope you and your family are well. Please consider this a public comment for your school committee on Thursday, April 9th. I wanted to share my support for canceling April school break this year and continue online learning. I have two Atkinson students and one North Andover middle school student. My thoughts are, one, school vacation week in April should be canceled so the students can continue with the online learning. They have just started, that gives the kids and parents a routine we all need, especially during these trying times. I think it would be extremely detrimental to pause a routine we have all just started and are just starting to get used to. They technically have already had three weeks off before the learning started with minimal schoolwork required during that period. Two, by continuing with the online learning during the April break week, it will allow our school year to end at 180 days and now either to get the kids out of the building sooner or end the online learning sooner if the state decides not to go back to school this year. This will allow families to have quote-unquote vacation time during the warmer months when it will be hotter in the buildings, and they might even be able to go somewhere if the stay-at-home order is lifted. Three, having a quote-unquote vacation week might encourage people to head out of their homes, breaking the state mandate to stay home, and further continue the spread of the virus and endanger our community. Thank you for your consideration. This message is really small. Andrew Furman, 5 Crossbow Lane, North Andover. Dear School Committee Chair Turisi, please accept this email as my public comment for the April 9th, 2020 School Committee meeting. I do not envy the decision the school committee must make on this topic, given the uncertainty of when or even our schools will reopen. My understanding is that if April vacation is canceled and schools reopen, then school would end approximately one week earlier than originally expected. On one hand, ending school a week early may put families in a childcare bind; on another, it will mean our children will have one less week of formal in-classroom instruction. If school is not canceled, the newly implemented virtual learning, which was not in place till April, was not put in place until April 6th, would be disrupted and delayed for a week just when our children are getting used to their schedule. It is well documented that a routine schedule is of vital importance to children, especially younger elementary-aged children. Any sense of normalcy for our children during these unprecedented times should be given a higher degree of merit. Since there was such a delay in implementing virtual learning in our district, disrupting the newly implemented virtual learning at this early stage will, in my opinion, be detrimental to our children and their emotional well-being. To prevent any further disruption in helping our children accommodate some sense of a normal schedule, I urge you to act and cancel April vacation and instruct our administration to continue with the recently adopted virtual learning. I want to close by thanking each of you, as well as our teachers and administrators, for their tireless efforts and continued hard work in the interest and well-being of our North Andover community. I wish all you much health, safety, immunity, and positivity. I encourage all members of our community to continue to practice social distancing and good hygiene. Respectfully submitted, Andrew Furman. This is from Ellen Mary Card, 29 Hawthorne Place. Dear Mr. Turisi, I feel strongly that foregoing the April vacation is the best option for our students. They had a great deal of time on their hands for the first three weeks of the school closure as remote learning options were created by our teachers. They are just settling into the routine of remote learning, and I think an interruption would be detrimental to most students. My children have said they would prefer to skip April vacation and proceed with remote learning. Thank you. This message is from, oh, Don Vargas, okay. I understand that this, dear Mr. Turisi, I understand that this Thursday, the school committee will vote on whether or not to keep school vacation in April. I also understand that if canceled, the end of the school year would go back to the previously scheduled 181st day instead of the 185th. I would like to vote to have April vacation canceled this year so that continued remote learning can occur. Amidst COVID-19, I would hope the districts understands that it is important to keep consistency and a sense of routine for all children, but more importantly now. Given that it has taken the district longer to develop a more routine, expected, remote learning experience, and that children will realistically just be getting into that routine by the time April vacation would start, it does not make sense to interrupt it now. Please consider giving students, staff, and parents the opportunity to have the extra time off in June when there is at least a chance of having a better, new norm in a flattened curve COVID-19 world than there is now in April. Thank you for your consideration. This is from Sheila Bryce, Sheila Bryce and Connor Hoffman, okay. Dear Mr. Turisi, please consider this a public comment for your school committee meeting on Thursday, April 9th. With this email, our entire household would like to voice our support for canceling April school break this year and express our concerns related to keeping the break in the midst of a global pandemic. As of the writing this letter, we are on day three of a newly established routine as set by the teachers and schools. Prior to this, to this, and for the past several weeks of quarantine, our child has perhaps had 20 minutes of schoolwork per day. In this vacuum of education, many parents, including us, work to establish daily schedules that would help our children to not stagnate as learners. Keeping April break, which is less than two weeks from now, will not only further interrupt yet another routine still in the process of being established, it will also further diminish learning this semester and contribute to this already stressful environment. It's important to understand that this will not affect just the children, but the adults as well, who are struggling to work from home while managing their children's education and well-being. Avoiding more destabilization of student education should be top priority for all involved in their education, especially the school committee. Number two, we understand that canceling April break will allow the school year to end a week earlier. If classes are back in session in person, an earlier end of the year will avoid the overheated classrooms amid to late June, when very little is accomplished in classes anyways. Even if school is not resumed in person, an earlier end of year will allow families to have a vacation when children can, at a minimum, enjoy the weather outside, if the pandemic conditions still restrict travel. Three, beyond further disruption to our lives and our children's education, keeping April break implicitly encourages and condones travel, even if just locally to see the family over Easter holidays. This would break the state mandate to stay home, thereby spreading the coronavirus, lengthening the quarantine, and further endangering our community physically and emotionally. We thank you for your serious consideration of this matter. Thank you for your patience, by the way. Still going here. This is from Jennifer Luz. Hi, David, I hope you and your loved ones are healthy and well. I want to start with a big thank you to you and the other school committee members for your service during an unprecedented time. As you consider what to do about upcoming April vacation, I encourage you to cancel vacation for several reasons. The kids are just getting the hang of online learning. The younger they are, the harder it is for them to transition to this new way of learning. A break for a vacation will just make it harder for them to establish the consistency that makes this type of learning possible for families in many different situations. For example, in our house, we have three North Andover Public School students in grades five, fifth grade, third grade, and first grade, and two parents still working full-time from home. The transition this week to online learning has been hard, but on day three, things are getting easier as the kids are learning their routine and getting the hang of our new schedules. Pausing for a week is going to make this even harder for the kids and the parents who have to guide this online learning. Also, I'd much prefer to see earlier summer vacation in June than a week off now. There's still a chance that we might be able to leave home and go places in June. Right now, everyone is stuck at home anyway. Canceling now will not disrupt anyone's travel plans, but opening up more summer when folks might be able to travel, or at least kids might be able to get out and go on day trips, is so much better. And finally, it seems really silly to have vacation after we just had three unexpected weeks of, off of, of learning. The recharge kids and adults need is not a week off from school, whatever in my house is craving is the connection and normalcy that these online classes are bringing. My kids are lighting up when they're on Google Hangout with the teachers and classmates, and despite the on-ramping of issues, it's so nice to see them engaging on their work in building a restaurant, a math class, multiplying fractions, or writing stories about their proudest moments. Thank you again for your leadership this time. Best, Jen Loos. Jen Cambra, Dear School Committee members, due to this current school situation, I think it's a good idea for students to work through the days of April vacation. Students have already had a quote-unquote vacation of sorts when school was initially closed and teachers and administrators needed to determine how to move forward. Also, the sooner we get out of school, the less chance of additional outbreaks of the COVID-19 virus. Thank you for your consideration. This message from Kevin Doobie. Dear Mr. Turisi, I'm writing you regarding the impending decision to keep or skip April vacation this year. I read the DESI's letter on the matter that was attached to the meeting minutes. In the document, it states that if we keep April vacation, the year ends on the 185th day, and if we skip, we end on the 181st day. However, that doesn't take into consideration the Blizzard Bag program we had. As it stands, when the first three weeks shut down was announced, the kids received two days of Blizzard Bag assignments. Therefore, the current expected last day of school is June 19th, our 183rd day of school. I would assume that if we keep April vacation, our last day remains the 183rd, June 19th. What happens if we skip vacation? Do we still get the 181st, June 17th? I think, I believe we need clarification on that point. I did see on Facebook, a woman said that in the district she teaches, and the superintendent was going to send a letter to the parents and let them vote on the decision to keep it or not and go with the majority. Personally, from my house, both my wife and I are in favor of skipping April vacation. I also polled my two daughters, sixth and eighth grade, and both are in favor of skipping it as well, as were two other eighth graders my daughters happened to be talking with on the phone at the time. The remote learning is helping by giving them something to do other than sitting around thinking of how much they missed hanging out with their friends and their various activities. My daughters have told me as much. I'd like to thank you, the rest of the school committee, the administration, and the teachers for pulling this together. I know how much went into adjusting to our new reality. I hope you and your family are safe and healthy. Thank you, Kevin. This is from Kristen Harvey, 16 Village Green Drive. Good evening. I'm writing to you tonight to request that the town does not cancel April vacation. My fourth grader has been a trooper despite being very overwhelmed and afraid in these unprecedented times, and she was crushed when she heard that April break might be canceled. While not, while it may not seem like much, four days now versus four days in June, April break offers a sense of normalcy during these times of fear and a new normal. Some of us have been balancing full-time careers with supporting our children full-time at home, and we have been anticipating this break as an opportunity, opportunity to stop worrying about schoolwork, but also to catch up on time together, and to catch up on all the work that cannot be done while trying to be a full-time parent and employee. Please keep in mind that some of us are struggling and some are sick, and we need to be gentle to ourselves and to one another. There is no need to cancel this break, and in order to support those who are truly of need, in need of it, I ask you that you please allow the break to remain. This is from Melissa Blackwell, 35 Mill Pond. Good evening. I have a daughter that attends Kitter's School. I would like the committee to consider to forego April vacation. I would like to see the kids end the school year on schedule, if not earlier, enjoy the summer. The kids are just adjusting to The kids are just adjusting to their new routines, and I'd like to get to normalcy. A concerned parent, Melissa Blackwell. Some people are funny. Dear Mr. Tracy, when the board votes later this week, I'm sorry, this is from Jamie and Russell Norris. When the board votes later this week, I would appreciate your support in canceling April vacation. Our children have had enough disruption in their lives and their education. I would like to see remote learning continue and not break in April for an unnecessary vacation. Any planned family travel has most surely been canceled at this point. If we are able to return at some point this school year, I feel it would be much more beneficial to all to have the kids out earlier in June a week than in April when we still cannot leave our homes. If we have a week off in April during social distancing, I believe people would be more inclined to leave their homes, jeopardizing the timeline for our return to normalcy and the health of our community. Thank you for your consideration. That was from Jamie Norris, then Russell said ditto. It's really the only call. Okay, thank you. This is from Victoria Fantasia. Hi, Dave. I would like to state my preference to skip April vacation this year. I am the parent of a kindergarten student and feel that the online schooling, which we just adjusted to, gives her a routine and purpose for each day. To stop the learning for those days' breaks, the routine that we are just adjusting to, just adjusting to, okay. There have been many transitions and changes for the kids recently, and keeping up with this new consistency would be beneficial to them, I believe. Also, at this point, we're not able to go places or meet with friends, so I would prefer to get out earlier when there's a chance of being able to see friends, et cetera. Thank you for taking the time to hear my point of view. I know you have many to consider on both sides. We appreciate all that you do for our children. This is from Tanya and Todd Brown. This is Tanya Brown, the mother of Avery Brown, eighth grader. I was advised to email you my thoughts regarding April vacation. I agree with 99% of the parents in that we should not have April vacation for 2020, and kids should continue with online schooling for the week. I really hope that this helps change the minds of the public school not to have April vacation this year. Thank you and have a good day. This message is from Laura Bates, 26 Woodbridge Road. Hi, Dave. I wanted to reach out about the cancellation of April vacation that is on the school committee's agenda for discussion at tonight's meeting. Now that we've started remote learning, we are just starting to establish a routine and a sense of familiarity of what is expected from the teachers. After three weeks of inconsistency, I think it would be disruptive to the students to take April vacation and then have to try to establish a routine again. During these uncertain times, I feel that there is some comfort to the kids to have a routine. My only experience is at the elementary level, but the work does not take up the entire day, and there is still flexibility to the day. I know there is no right or wrong answer in these unprecedented times. If we cancel April vacation, my understanding is that the kids will get out earlier in June. The benefit, of course, is that we might be back to some normalcy at that point, and maybe they can enjoy time with family and friends. The strain will be on working parents because they will need to find an additional week of care for the summer. That being said, having April vacation will also put a strain on working parents that are trying to work from home currently. I know that this is not an easy decision, and the school committee will do what is best for the district. Thank you for your consideration. Okay, this is from Hillary Alden. Hello, my name is Hillary Alden, and I am writing to you in regards to the decision to be made about April vacation at tonight's school committee meeting. I am a North Andover resident, parent, and an employee of the North Andover Public Schools. It is my opinion that we should keep the current school calendar as it stands. I know there are those who would rather us get out four days earlier in June, but I think canceling April vacation would be a mistake. Yes, there were three weeks between the initial announcement of school closures and the launch of remote learning here in North Andover, but those three weeks were not a break. I and many other educators were working hard through those weeks to create engaging content for our students, check in with them, and plan remote learning. In addition to this, we have been in the same state of anxiety and stress caused by this pandemic that the rest of our community are in. We have also been taking care of our children, parents, and other loved ones. It may seem unnecessary to have a break after only two weeks of remote learning, but a break at this time will be beneficial to all. Without April break, we would have 10 weeks, if schools are not reopened, straight of remote learning. Teachers and students will become burnt out with such a grueling schedule. Keeping April vacation will give educators time to rest and recharge, as well as a chance to reflect on the remote learning experience. It'll be an opportunity to slow down and really see where we can make improvements and be thoughtful about it. Thank you for your time and consideration. This is from Kevin Driscoll, 86 Kingston Street. David and members of the North Andover Public School School Committee and Dr. Gilligan, father of two daughters in North Andover Middle School and a daughter who is a member of the North Andover High School class of 2018. As I wrote last week, I will simply underscore my focus again, which is individualized communication. We need more teacher-to-student direct communication. I understand the complexities of this shutdown, the work that has been done to communicate with families, and the process of getting the teachers up to speed on Google Classroom and assignments for the students. We are all facing new ways to communicate, and obviously, these take time to implement. We're all doing it, and the struggle is very real. I maintain the most important and tangible and appreciable task for a teacher at this time of uncertainty and anxiety is student outreach. It's not a daily assignment. It's not sharing a video of weather with a class. It's not responding to a math or social studies question. It's a simple email sent to each student that asks the most important question, how are you doing, and says the most important thing to a student. I miss you and your classmates. I'll end this with a quote from a fellow educator, Brad Johnson. Relationships before rigor, grace before grades, patience before programming, love before lessons. This is why we became educators. This is why we teach. Thank you. This is from Jen Goldman, 28 Jared Place. I congratulate the schools for delivery meals to a growing number of those in need. It is heroic. My public comments are as follows. One, I am concerned that not all students have an electronic device and that some are sharing with siblings. My concern stems from hearing your district does not have a one-to-one policy on electronic devices. There is no master list of who does and doesn't have a device, and there is no method in place for monitoring the online logins. I am hoping to see a public communication that eliminates these concerns. Two, I am concerned with the lack of visual connecting and engaging in a more human, caring way with students. I believe this is extremely important and a higher priority than uploading new curriculum. I would like to see teachers scheduling one video online session per week, per class, to connect, engage, and continue some level of socialization. I am hoping to see a public communication responding to this request. Three, I vote for teaching through spring break, ending school four days early. Thank you, Jen Goldman. This message is from Lisa Luggan, mother of an ex and first grader. Regarding the upcoming April vacation, I think the kids had enough disruption the last three weeks. On day four today of remote learning, I feel my son is finally starting to get into a rhythm and a routine. He looks forward to seeing his classmates on screen and understands that he has schoolwork to do each day. If we give them a break after only two weeks of this, it is going to create more chaos for both the students and the parents. I would appreciate your support continuing the remote learning through April vacation. I've just got a couple more folks. This is from Thomas Duggan, 48 Bickingham Boulevard, North Andover. Good evening, Chairman, Board Members, Superintendent, and members of the school staff. I offer the following three points this evening. One, across North Andover, there are monuments to men and women who fought in conflicts near and far in defense of our community and way of life. More memorials highlight the contributions of men and women to the fields of science, sports, arts, literature, religion, and government. Our town maintains cemeteries, Hall of Fame walls, pictures, and paintings to commemorate the contributions of those who improved our quality of life. Many of our North Andover Middle School and North Andover High School students have served on the front line of the COVID-19 pandemic of 2020 by fulfilling their part-time roles of stockpersons, cashiers, butchers, aides, and other jobs at local grocery stores, butcher shops, package stores, nursing homes, and other care centers. I ask that the school board and the superintendent designate an area of the high school as the COVID-19 pandemic wall of thanks. Eligible candidates for the wall of fame shall be current students who have demonstrated employment at a designated essential business during the term of the COVID-19 pandemic. It is a time to honor our students serving on the front lines of the pandemic. Their service has ensured we have food, medicine, and the materials to take care of our families. Let us honor them for services they have provided during this time of need. Two, regarding April vacation, please consider the needs of our teachers and staff for downtime during this crisis. I think it is appropriate to consider canceling the school break, but ask that the school board considering limiting the cancellation to Wednesday to Friday. Please provide our teachers with a day of rest. Three, I wish to thank all our teachers, professional, and support, kitchen, kid stop, and central office staff for everything that they have done during the crisis. While many will use Facebook and other social media channels to attack our teachers and distract staff competency, to attack our teachers and district staff's competency to only then publicly facilitate between not enough and too much content, my family thanks and defends you for all that you have done to create a safe, accessible, and fair learning environment and services for all our students and families. I thank you very much. Okay, last one. Ann Holly. Dear Mr. Tracy School Committee, my vote is to cancel April vacation. Academically and otherwise, it makes sense to maintain some sort of academic schedule. I think leave it up to the teachers as far as what their expectations are as far as workload. Personally speaking, my two just started to get into routine after weeks away from the classroom. Equally as important is a way of connecting with their peers and teachers. Finally, there's really nowhere to go as far as vacation, so why not use this time in the best way we can? As always, thanks for your time and dedication. Thank you. I felt, you know, there's, obviously, there's a lot of duplication of the arguments there, but again, I really appreciate people taking the time to weigh in on this very important issue, and I thought it was important to read your words, reiterate them as much as I could, and I'm sorry if I stumbled over a few of them, but I really appreciate it, and I'm sure the members of the board appreciate it as well. Okay, so, we obviously have to discuss this, and we need to take it up. To do so, though, as a first order of business, just to take up the order first, I'd like to have a motion to suspend the rules and dispense with a first reading of it and go right to a second reading. Could I have such a motion?
Mr. Tracy, I would like to have it, and I will, please, rules for reviewing the April...
This is Holly. I'll second it.
Okay. So, that was Mr. McDevitt who made the motion to suspend the rules, seconded by Ms. Witsky. We have to have a further discussion first? Any discussion from the members on just suspension of the rules?
Chair Tracy?
Yes, Ms. Picard.
My question is, are we going to be taking the agenda out of order? Are we going to have a superintendent's report or a chair's report?
I apologize. I said earlier at the beginning, we didn't have a superintendent's report or a chair's report. This is the only agenda.
Okay, thank you. I apologize.
No worries. No worries. All right. Any other discussion on suspension of the rules? Hearing none. Ms. Picard, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Witsky, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Mably, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Chair Tracy votes yes as well. So that's a 5-0 vote. We are suspending the rules. There'll be no first reading, just a second reading of it. Okay, so now we're at, we're taking up the agenda item, and we can have a discussion on the possible cancellation of April vacation. I, you know, it's always, you know, usually when we have our meetings, we have, you know, give and take, and people are very respectful of, you know, they can tell when someone's done talking. Since you guys can't see each other, I'm just going to kind of go down the line, ask you to speak and give your comments on it and see where this takes us tonight, okay? So, I'll just turn first to our vice chair, Ms. Picard, if you want to go first.
Thank you, Chair Tracy. I think that it's very clear that we, this is unprecedented, right? We don't have a roadmap to follow. I'm getting feedback of my own voice, so that's very distracting. I don't know if North Andover Camp can turn off the sound in the room. Yep, that helped a lot. Nope, didn't help.
Where did Brian go? All of a sudden, we got a new person there. That kind of freaked me out a little bit.
It's really hard to hear.
Yeah, I think we can see this from a lot of angles, and there's a lot of information we don't have. It's clear that we have right now a May 4th return date. If we knew for certain we were coming back on May 4, I would be asking if it's better to have four days remote without a teacher or four days in the classroom with a teacher. I've heard from a number of families about the stress and anxiety that we've heard at least in one of these letters, so I do feel like this is a complicated issue, and there's no easy or one right answer to it. We've heard cancel, we've heard keep, we've heard cancel part of it, keep part of it. Overwhelmingly, the people who have chosen to speak with us have clearly said that they'd like to cancel the vacation. So I don't, I don't have any questions right now, but I just would speak to the fact that it is true that there's no best answer for every family and for every student, and then I'll listen for a while. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair, Picard. Mr. McDevitt, would you like to go next, please?
Sure, I would. So just quickly, as I kind of went through the comments, as you read them, I kept a little bit of a tally. I may have missed one or so, but it did look to me that we were above 22 in favor of canceling the April vacation and three against. So, I would just kind of say, you know, that's where I am kind of from the feedback from the community. I've definitely had some folks who have reached out to me, but as far as public comment, you know, I do think it was about 23 or so to three. I know we don't typically do this, David, but were there any questions or comments that came up in any of the letters that you feel at this point you would like to clarify?
Really, one, and Dr. Gilligan, if you're there, or someone else from your team could address the question about when we would actually get out, if April vacation was to be canceled, when would we get out of school if we, you know, got the four days on the Dr. Gilligan, are you there?
Just unmuting my microphone.
Okay, thank you. The question was, when, if we get rid of these four days for April vacation, on the back end in June, when would, when would we get out?
So as the commissioner stated, it would be the 185th scheduled day, and one of the approved districts would be on the classroom to make up the two-day, two additional days, so it would be June 15th if we were, if you voted to work through April vacation. It would be the four days off the end from the 19th, so the last day scheduled was the
So that was really the only question that I had from the comments, Andrew. I don't think I missed anything else. I think that was the only...
You know, I think, we don't typically always respond back to public comment in a way of kind of give and take, but, you know, I think if that in particular is an important piece of information that I think is valuable for the committee as they start to make some of their decisions tonight. So when I think about this, you know, I'm torn to be very honest about this. You know, my own kids have, you know, like many people have mentioned, are getting into the routine of being back in school, you know, connecting with their teachers, classmates, you know. We're, you know, a family of five, and we're, you know, all insulated kind of in our home, and so, you know, that exposure to that has been really good for their mental health and their physical and their educational kind of curiosity that's there. So, I have really enjoyed seeing them kind of re-engaging with their teachers, re-engaging with their classmates, working on some different projects together, and just kind of helping them kind of feel a little bit more of the normalcy that's there. You know, the routine and the continuity to me has... You know, the, the routine and the continuity to me has just been great. I think if I start to look at, you know, having Monday, of course, is the holiday for Patriots' Day, but having, you know, Tuesday to Friday off, I think it really interrupts that process for them. I think there's been some really good educational value for what has been happening over the past couple of days. And certainly that's going to continue to grow as everybody gets more familiar with what's happening and where things are. And I think, you know, the, the teachers and the, the staff have had an incredible impact in these students. You know, just having another face that kind of reaches out and says, you know, I, I want to answer your questions, I want to be there. That has been really, really important to us. And I think a number of people mentioned that, you know, if we kind of have the April break and there's, you know, four days that, that is really just kind of open, you know, we run the risk of exploiting a little bit of that social distancing that's there. And I think if we've got students and, you know, we're encouraging them to be online and in classes, working with teachers, you know, we, we can help diminish that as best as possible. I think the last point, you know, that's been made by a number of people as well, is, you know, we don't necessarily know when this is going to end. You know, our goal is May 4th. You know, whether or not that comes true or not, you know, we would then be getting out on the 15th of June, so I, I think that that's great. The one thing I might consider as I kind of percolate on this is, you know, do we potentially have a longer, assuming we go back to school, do we potentially have a longer weekend in May centered around Memorial Day? If families are going to have the opportunity to get away and just, you know, have a break, whether it's teachers or, or students, just to have that opportunity to kind of decompress for a couple of days. I, I think that there's some value there, so I haven't made up my mind either way. I mean, I'm, I'm still entertaining both sides, but I, I would pause for a moment and, and let some of my other committee members weigh some thoughts as well.
Thank you, Andrew. Ms. Mably, would you like to go next, please?
Sure, so I don't want to reiterate what a bunch of people have already said, but I did make a bunch of notes and a lot of people brought up various things that were similar to what I had come up with. Couple of things to point out, I, I think it's important to keep in mind that teachers are probably, I'm guessing, working more hours right now in this structure than they would if they were in the building. And I'm guessing that they would be at a different stress level trying to catch up with kids who they are not seeing on a regular basis or kids that they already worry about, et cetera, and trying to reach everyone in the way their best need to be reached. So I can see why teachers are, who have been at this a little bit longer, doing all the preparations are probably pretty wiped out and would love a little bit of a break right now. What I keep coming back to, I think somebody mentioned this, and actually Mr. McDevitt just did as well, is I keep thinking about, should we stay in this structure through the end of the year? What if we don't get to go back into the buildings? I can't imagine going from the end of April vacation all the way to June 15th without some kind of a break other than the Monday of Memorial Day. I think that sounds incredibly challenging. Can you guys hear me? I hope you can hear me, it's making weird sounds. But I, I would like to propose considering, we already have Monday Patriots' Day off, maybe extending it a day or two there. And then I would like to see adding maybe the Thursday and Friday or some other days before the Memorial Day break. Because I, I think a stretch of five or six weeks doing this sort of thing with no break is going to be extremely challenging to both kids and teachers. And, and I'm coming from, I, I have two kids in school, one who is probably going to just be getting in a decent routine when April vacation would start. So, you know, I, obviously, in her case, I would much rather not take a break then, but I, I do sympathize with people who struggle through this sort of thing and people who have parents working at home. There are people who are worrying about loved ones who are ill across the country as well, things like that. So I do think of that, I, I think we need to be considering, and I know we don't have any answers, but if we have to stay like this the rest of the year, there's got to be some other way to get another break at another point, is my concern.
Holly, next.
Yeah, I echo what everybody else has already said. I think that the structure for the kids is so important right now and the routine. And I'm also concerned that if we have a break, it's going to be like starting all over again, which is hard. But I also think Amy just made a really good point that from now until the end of the year without a break is a really long time. So I might be more inclined to look at Andrew's suggestion of a longer Memorial Day. But I would not, I don't think I'd be in favor of canceling April vacation now for all the reasons stated. And clearly, the public opinion dictates that too, that we heard.
Thank you, Holly. Before I turn over to you, Greg, I, I'd love to say my, my two feelings, my two cents on this. First of all, I, I just really want to thank the teachers and the administrators and Greg, your, your whole team for the work that you've put in over the last several weeks to roll this out. You know, no one, no one went to school for this kind of stuff. And I'm sure you had varying degrees of competency when it comes to some of this technology. But a, a special thanks to, you know, Ms. Kellaway and Ms. Tyrrell over at the Kittredge for, you know, my kids' two teachers. The, this week, they've been engaged and it, it's good, they're in, they get into a more routine. It's been very, very helpful because, you know, Sarah and myself are, you know, still working and, you know, working quite a bit because of the, the COVID-19 crisis. I, again, don't want to go over everything that, that's been said, but my feelings are that we should cancel April vacation right now and, you know, continue with the, the remote learning. The routine, you know, and again, I have a second grader and a third grader, as you all know, is very important at that young age. It, it seems like, you know, the neighborhood has more of a rhythm to it now with the kids being in, in, in quote unquote, "school." So that's the, the main reason that I want to, you know, cancel April vacation. And also, I, I just think as some of the comments mentioned, you know, there's no place to go right now. You know, you can't even go to the park now. You know, people are basically riding their bikes on the street or road blading on the street, whatever, just staying within the confines of, of their neighborhood. So there's really no place to go anyways right now. I do hear what the members are saying and I am, you know, would, would love to make some decisions right now about what days we would take off if we wanted to have a break. I find it very difficult to even, you know, have that kind of speculative conversation without knowing if we're going back to school on, on May, May 4th or not. So, you know, my feeling is this, I think we should cancel April vacation right now and keep an open mind about finding out what's the best needs for our kids, families, and teachers, once we find out whether or not we're going back to school on May 4th or not. I think that is going to dictate if we were to take, you know, it was suggested some days around Memorial Day and maybe having a, making that an extended vacation. A lot would have to do on the circumstance, not only with going back to school, but also what, what are the restrictions on travel? Things like that, I would, I would want to weigh all those factors. But I think as it stands right now to me, canceling April vacation is, is best for our kids and best for our families. And I know, I know where the teachers' union is coming from, from on this, but I, I know how hard you've worked to put this together. So I, I truly, truly appreciate that. But, you know, when we signed up for this, I mean, this is why I'll speak for myself, you know, obviously, my motivation, primary motivation is what's best for kids. And in my, my humble opinion, canceling vacation is, is best for kids right now. So before we contemplate motions, Greg, your team, anything you want to add in right now on the discussion, the comments, or anything like that?
Can you hear me, David? I would just say that I'm appreciative to be able to work in a district with tremendous colleagues and supportive parents who are working hard during something that's never happened before. There's no blueprint, it's unprecedented. And to be able to roll out a remote learning plan when the commissioner met with superintendents just a little over a week ago is absolutely, a week and a half ago, is remarkable. And I really appreciate all the work parents are doing while they're trying to juggle their personal commitments and, and their students and families. I appreciate the work of students. And last but not least, I truly appreciate the work of our teacher staff and administrators who have probably put more work in to get this rolled out than has ever been coordinated and effort so quickly. So I'm just thankful in that sense and our leadership team's ready to support our students and staff and teachers as we move forward. I would ask Lorraine if she had anything to add, the Assistant Superintendent?
No, I would agree with what Dr. Gilligan said. Whatever decision is made, we will do our very best to support the teachers, our students, and our community in that effort.
I turn back to the members, I guess one question I have, I, I like to possibly split this into, into at least one definitive vote and then maybe a, a commitment for something else. But I, what I gleaned from the conversation and from the public comment is that we should cancel April vacation. So I, I, I would like to ask for a motion to cancel April vacation as it is right now. And then we can have a discussion about when or what days we think we're going to try to either have a vacation or, or get out on, on the 15th as if we didn't do anything at all. My sentiment is I would need more information before I can make that decision, but I'm, I'm going to just throw that out there and I'm happy to go down the line again on how, how people want to talk about this. I, I just know that it, it's difficult because I have to go one by one. So Ms. Picard, do you want to go, because you, you spoke last?
Yeah, so I would say a couple of things. One, again, we have very little data, but there is information saying that the longer remote learning goes, the less engaged people become over time. So I add that into my thinking, which is that if we do take a break now and if there was an announcement that school was not going to return, I think we'd have a diminished motivation on the part of students to return to the work that's offered. So I think that, again, speaks in favor of canceling April vacation as it stands.
Thank you, I'm muted, Andrew.
So I didn't hear you call me. I, I don't think I have anything additional to, to add to it at this time.
That's fine. Ms. Mably?
Sorry. I, I understand, Mr. Tracy, that you don't feel comfortable since we don't have the information on whether we're going back May 4th or not. But I'm still in favor of finding some kind of a compromise for the kids who are exhausted by this and the teachers. And also the kids like mine who would do much better by sticking with the, the routine and not having a break, by deciding now to maybe take a day or two off in addition to Patriots' Day and then determining to take time off in May before Memorial Day. So I, I'm, that would be, I'm most in favor of that.
Ms. Witsky?
I stand by my earlier comments. The only thing I will say to add on to Helen's is that she raises a good point that if we were to give a vacation now and school doesn't come back, then that's a long time till June 19th without a break of remote learning. So that just further supports my decision to cancel, my vote to cancel.
Everybody, i- i- if, if someone would make a motion to cancel the vacation, because we always, no, Monday, the 20th is Patriots' Day, that's a holiday we're off anyways. But could we, could I have a motion to cancel April vacation from April 21st to April 24th? That's four days. Could I have, could I have such a motion?
This is Tracy, I'll move that we cancel April vacation from April 21st to the 24th, 2020.
This is Holly, I'll second it.
Okay, motion made by Mr. McDevitt, seconded by Ms. Lynch. Further discussion, I, I guess where, where I'm going with this is I think, you know, today, Amy, you know, so maybe there's a compromise that would be reached. My personal feeling is I don't think we could really reach that decision until we had more information. And listen, let me just, I think it was said in the comment, there was no right or wrong answer here. I know I've had conversations with the four of you, with my neighbors, with people. People understand this is not an easy decision and it's one of the more difficult decisions you're going to have to make. And, you know, I myself, I know I like to have all the, the facts in front of me. Unfortunately, those facts are not in our grasp right now. And it's unfortunate, but it's a situation we've got to deal with. So I, I, I think that, you know, this is the place to start. The sentiment that I'm hearing from all of you is to cancel vacation. And then after we cancel vacation, we can have a discussion about what it would take to get to a decision on those other items, if that sounds fair. So we have a motion on the floor to cancel vacation by Mr. McDevitt, seconded by Ms. Witsky. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, Ms. Picard?
Yes. Yes? Yes?
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes, you didn't call me, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, maybe you didn't hear me, that's right. Ms. Mably?
Yes.
Ms. Witsky?
Yes.
And Mr. Tracy votes yes as well. So we are canceling April vacation as of, for April 24th to the 25th. Okay, the second part, I guess, I would think we're probably not going to get a vote tonight, but I want to have a discussion with you about what information you'll need, when we could meet again to determine to that. So I'll, I'll leave it up. You know, I, I know Ms. Mably seemed like the, the person the most who was looking to, to find possibly another vacation. What other information would you need to, to make that determination, I guess?
Chair Tracy, this is Helen Picard. If we were talking about adding two days someplace between now and June, I would be in favor of setting an end date to the school year of June 17th because that would allow families to plan. It would split the difference for families who are going to have childcare difficulties, having that extra time in June. And that would allow us the flexibility to add those two days at a later date. That doesn't answer your question of what information I need, but it does tell you what I am, well, that's, that's the direction I'd like to go.
I'm gonna have, I'm gonna try to have a little back and forth with everybody, so please be patient so I can understand where people are coming from. Do you feel like you, you need to know whether we're going back to school on May 4th first to make that determination about those two days?
No. I feel like I need to know what day we're going to end this year.
Is that correct? You want, Helen, you want to decide tonight what day we're going to end on?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt, you want to go next?
I think at this point, without additional guidance from the state regarding end of school year, I would struggle with that. The one thing I do think is we just gained four days back in our calendar for the four days within April vacation. That would put us ending school on a Monday, not necessarily the most ideal, I think, for a couple of different reasons. So I'm not, I'm interested in Mrs. Picard's comment of, you know, ending and, and setting a date there. I don't know if I would go to the 17th, but I might do Monday, Tuesday, because I know, for example, you know, the middle school does some eighth grade graduation type things, most of the schools do fifth grade clapout activities, et cetera. And I think that those type of things would be helpful for families to start to plan. If we are allowed to have public graduation, you know, that would have. If we are allowed to have public graduation, you know, that would have already occurred probably two to three, two weeks earlier. So that's kind of where I am right now.
Good. Thank you, Andrew. Ms. Mably?
I guess there's nothing new that I would need to know right now other than just my position stands that should we have to stay at home through May, I would want to be sure to schedule in some time off at the expense of staying in school a day or two longer in June.
So I'm clear, you want to know, or you think you need to know whether we're going back to school on May 4th to make that determination?
Correct.
Thank you. Holly?
Yeah, so I would definitely need to know when school is going to end. If there's any chance that the kids get back in school for even the month of June, that's really important for all the milestone grades. And I wouldn't want to shortchange them by ending four days earlier or even setting an end date now if it means that the eighth graders wouldn't move up or the seniors don't get one of their activities or even the fifth graders. So I would not be comfortable making any decision until we know when the kids are going back to school, if at all.
Thank you, Holly. I'll say, I'm in the same boat. As frustrating as that may be for some parents and families listening out there, you know, this could cut both ways. And I'm not prepared to make a decision on that until I know if we're going back on May 4th. Looking at my calendar, you know, I would think we're going to know in the next week or two whether the state says we have to stay home or not and what they do with the school year. I mean, I have listened to Governor Baker's press conferences almost every single day. And I know he's obviously a huge proponent and advocate for education, big supporter. And he says over and over again, I don't want to give up on the school year. I've heard him say that almost every single, I don't want to give up on the school year. So I think when he can make that decision, he's going to make it. It's going to happen in the next couple of weeks. We can come back and make that call. You know, it'd probably be the last week in April where we could make that decision. But again, this is a, I will entertain motions if so be it, that if you want to set the date right now. But my opinion, I'm not prepared to do that at this point. Greg, Dr. Gilligan, I'm sorry, anything you can add to that discussion? Can we come back, say today is the 9th, could we come back, you know, the 23rd, 24th, if we know by then and make the call then on the end of school day?
David, as you said before, there is, this has never happened. All I can say is that, you know, being in touch with many superintendents in local districts, there's seems to be a couple of different things that they're doing. Is there, some districts are canceling and foregoing the vacation and getting out the four days early and setting that now. Others are having the break. And the only other option that I'm aware of that I've seen is that some folks have decided to go three days during the vacation or two days and then taking those off the end. So I'm not aware of any local communities that have come back that have anything pending for May, and I just wanted to share that.
I think there's some unique ideas and things we could do depending on whether we know if we're going back to school or not. But I'm of the opinion that we should wait as much as that is concerning to some people. But at this point, I'll accept any motions from the floor if someone wants to make a motion.
I would ask first for a point of clarification. If we do nothing, if we cancel the vacation and don't say anything about the end of the school year, by default, that says our last day of school is June 15th. Is that correct?
Greg, that's correct. Correct?
Yes.
Yes.
I move that we determine the end of school will not be earlier than the 17th of June.
Okay, just so I'm clear, Helen. Well, first, is there a second, first of all? Hearing no second, the motion fails for lack of a second. I'm sorry, Helen. I know where you're getting at and I'm not.
That's okay.
I'm not crazy about.
I can only do what I can do. Thank you.
I'm not crazy about ending on a Monday either, so I'm going to give it some more thought. So, but thank you. All right, any other discussion on this issue, any other motions that members want to make? Okay, like I alluded to in my comments, thank you, everybody. As I alluded to in my comments, I think we'll come back as soon as we have more information. And I hope the public can be patient with us. You've shown incredible patience with us to date. When we, you know, find out whether they're coming back or not, we will have public comment again. I look forward to that. But I do appreciate people's patience and their input. And when the time comes when we have a better idea of how we're going to proceed, I'm sure we'll get a lot of public comments at that point. Before I go, usually at this point in the evening, I usually have a public comment from the members. And I know Ms. Picard has an important announcement about the Hall of Fame, Educational Hall of Fame. Go ahead.
Yes, I would encourage everybody during this time to please think about who they can nominate for our Hall of Fame. On our website, there's a Hall of Fame icon and that will give you connections to all that you need to do to nominate somebody and all the requirements for the nominees. We changed this year from a June date to April 30th. So we would love to have some nominations by April 30th. The person you nominate does need to have been retired or out of the system for five years. I have heard people say that they would like to nominate somebody, but they don't have all the other pieces of it, like who their administrative advisors were, supervisors. So if you get the process started, we'll be happy to help shepherd it. But we would love to have those nominations by April 30th.
Is that a requirement of our policy, Ms. Picard, by April 30th?
That is what we changed our policy to be this year. So there may be reason for this committee to revisit that, given the current circumstances.
Well, let's do this. I anticipate us meeting prior to April 30th. If nominations are slow, we'll put on the agenda for next time to extend the deadline. Is that okay?
So we usually don't get the nominations until the actual due date.
Well, give it some thought and we can get on the agenda for next time to take a vote to extend the deadline, if that's the case. Thank you. Anything else, Helen?
I would just say to the community to please be, please be gentle with yourselves and with each other. Over and over again, we hear that students really need connections and care. Your goal really needs to be to meet the needs of your family and those who are in front of you. So I hope that you will do that.
Thank you, Helen. Andrew?
I do have a quick question on the Hall of Fame, and I apologize, Mrs. Picard, but any nominations that were submitted for last year that were not selected remain in the pool. Is that correct?
There were two, there were two nominations and we inducted two people. So we have, we have nothing in the files.
Okay, but in the future, if we were to get three and select one, two would remain?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Andrew, any other public comment right now for you?
No, other than I really want to thank the teachers and the administration and all of the staff for everything that they've been doing to pull together for our community. I'm sure Dr. Gilligan has the numbers, but the amount of food and meals that have gone out to our community, not just on school days, not just to schoolchildren, but to residents, has just been fantastic. And I think so many people are, you know, really in need of that and really appreciative of that. And I think it's extremely, extremely important for us to recognize them. And the teachers, you know, again, nobody signed up to be an educator remotely. They really, you know, I'm sure miss the classroom and the smiling faces in the hallways and all of those things. And to adapt as quickly as they have to the environment that we have today is, again, unprecedented. I really do want to thank them and I want to thank them for the subtle ways that they've reached out to students all over the district. It means a tremendous amount to these children. And I will say quickly and antedotally, there was a, one of the women in the cafeteria at the middle school, just happened to reach out to my daughter because she knows her from the lunch line and, you know, just wanted to say checkup and, you know, checked up on her whole table and her group of friends. And it just really caught my daughter completely off guard that someone that she, you know, has a daily interaction with took the time to check up on her. And, you know, in ways big and small, that's what this community is all about. And I really want to say, on behalf of my family and so many that are impacted and touched as well, thank you to everyone. Really, it truly means a lot.
Thank you, Andrew. Well said. Ms. Mably?
The same sort of thing. Super grateful and thankful for our staff, administrators, teachers, who I know are working above and beyond their normal hours and not just working, but worrying about kids. Their own kids, our kids, above and beyond their, what they signed up for. And super grateful, thank you. And it may sound a little dramatic, but, you know, it's obviously it's hard to make these decisions, but we didn't have to decide who gets a ventilator today. So I'm super grateful for that and I hope that we're all just taking care of our families and making that a priority.
Thank you, Amy. Well said. Ms. Witsky?
When you go last, everybody takes everything you're going to say. But yeah, I just want to thank the teachers. I know they've all been working extremely hard. They've been checking in with my kids and I'm grateful and I know a lot of parents are grateful.
Yeah, I said this exactly. Thank you, everybody. Thank you to the teachers and to the administrators and Greg. I, you and I talk like four or five times a day and I appreciate everything you're doing. You're leading this district. You've been a strong voice for the community and you've got a great team working for you. So my thanks to you as well. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Motion by Ms. Picard, seconded by Mr. McDebit to adjourn. Ms. Picard, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. McDebit, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Mably, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Witsky, how do you vote?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. We are now adjourned at 7:25. Thank you, everyone. We'll talk soon.
Thank you. Thanks, Cam.